Good afternoon Supervisor Lee, would you like to do a mic check?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear sir, have a great meeting.
Good, thank you.
Good afternoon Jeff.
Megan, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I bet maybe.
I can hear you Jeff.
Ask me questions about.
Rhonda, can you still hear me?
I sure can.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon Vice President Ellenberg.
I was muted. Hi Rhonda, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Best day ever.
Awesome.
Can someone tell me how to get the picture of my dogs off? I don't mean to have that there. I did it for a personal thing and now I don't know how to get rid of it.
Either the Zacks know and can help Supervisor Ellenberg?
Thank you. There's an option to replace it with a different picture, but I just want to eliminate all pictures.
Or Rhonda, do you know?
Yeah, we'll work on it right now.
Okay, so at the bottom left-hand side of your screen, to the right of the start video, there is a little carrot. If you click on that and then you choose, choose virtual background.
Okay.
And then there should be a none.
Right, it's not a background, I don't think. It's a, it's not a background.
Okay.
It's the thing that goes up when I turn my video off.
In the same spot, but it's actually under profile. You go to profile and then you hit the little image that comes up over your name.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, it just says change picture. It doesn't tell me how I can get rid of the picture.
Yeah, so you would need to probably put a different photo because the default one would have gotten, would have been kind of overridden probably the first or second time, whenever you.
Oh no. Well, how do I?
Hello Supervisor.
Hello. Oh Mike, having an issue. I can.
I believe there is a way to do it. Supervisor Ellenberg, I'm gonna put my team on it because I know we've done it and we'll get back to you.
I just changed it to, or at least tried to change it, yeah, to a picture at least of myself rather than my dog. So that's an improvement. Let me make sure that's the case, hold on. Yeah, alright, well that's at least better. And if you can help me get rid of it some other time, that would be great. Thank you.
We'll drop you an email with instructions.
Okay, awesome. Hey President Wasserman.
Hello Vice President Ellenberg.
Excited for your big speech.
Thank you, thank you. I just walked by your office. I'm back.
Yeah.
Alrighty, beautiful out there. I think, how's my volume Susan? I'm on a different. Thank you. Yeah, we're saying it's very different this year with the whole COVID issue that we're not having dancers and musicians and the snack bar afterwards.
I know.
Very, very different.
Well, hopefully you can do it up next year.
Thank you, that would be exciting.
But next year you may not be able to have the Bambino at your event, the way you do today.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
That's some impressive recognition.
Yep. That was a gift my former chief John Gibbs gave me shortly before he retired down to San Diego. So, I'm gonna have it there and I'm hoping when he's watching the state of the county that he sees that I chose to put his gift in the screen.
Susan, the reason I recognize it is because it has always given me immense pleasure to know that somebody with that physique could be a premier ballplayer.
I'm just kinda proud that I knew who Bambino was.
Yes. All good, all good. Alright, we're all live right now. I've got 2 o'clock and on my screen on this little device here. I see Rhonda, I see Supervisor Semidion and I see you Vice President Ellenberg. And I don't know how to do any larger screens.
I see Supervisor Lee.
Okay, I don't have any of that on this little laptop. Do we have all five people? Do we have Supervisor Chavez?
We are missing Supervisor Chavez.
We are. Okay, hey Rhonda.
Hello.
Rhonda, mic check?
Mic check, you sound wonderful.
I meant, I was, I thought you'd say Rhonda, Rhonda, Rhonda. Alright.
Rhonda, Rhonda, Rhonda.
All good, all good.
You didn't say help me Rhonda. And Supervisor Chavez has a right.
Wonderful, so let's call this meeting to order. And Rhonda, is it you or Jill or who's gonna be?
It's gonna, you got me today.
Wonderful. Will you please take a roll call?
I certainly will Supervisor Lee.
Yes, present.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Semidion.
Semidion here, thank you.
Vice President Ellenberg.
I'm here.
President Wasserman.
I'm here as well. Please stand if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Indivisible with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll now turn to public comment. Rhonda, do we have any speakers today?
Yes sir, we currently do have two speaker, three speakers, four speakers, five speakers. Looks like they're still coming in, so let's give it a minute and we'll give you a final number.
That'd be wonderful. And Rhonda, on this device, I can't see how many speakers are in the queue. So when we get to the end, if you'll let us know, that concludes our public comment.
I certainly will. It currently looks like we have seven speakers, so would you like two minutes per speaker?
Yes, let's go two minutes per speaker.
Alright, our first speaker is Scott Largent. Scott, I'm unmuting you, please accept the unmute and you will have two minutes to speak. The timer will start once you begin speaking.
Good afternoon everyone, Scott Largent. I had a interesting morning. I've been staying now down off of Spring Street. I was able to purchase a motor home. It's a lot better for my Zoom business with my daughter. I have a Honda generator, you know, just trying to survive because I don't want to go to any shelters because there's, these places are just not good for somebody that's been in recovery for over five years. Now, what happened this morning, I get up pretty early to kinda check on people, kinda bring my generator over, different encampments in that area, charge people's phones, bring over some coffee. It's kinda my routine before I go to work. And what I do is I write on the main section of Spring Street there, my van is also parked because that's, that's how I get to and from work, it's my transportation. What ended up happening is the city rolled through and they were spraying, and I believe it's Roundup Pro Max and it is gly, I can't even pronounce the active ingredients. Now they put all these little pitch signs in the area, but the thing is, is out there right now, there are so many people living in motorhomes and cars, there's no real safe parking programs for those people. And the city is gassing them. They are literally gassing them. This stuff made me sick this morning. I was shocked that, you know, basically it's that little easement past the sidewalk, that little three feet of basically dead lawn. And they're gassing people out there. This is another trick that they're using along with parking all these different tow trucks out there, giving fake notices, harassing people from the Department of Transportation, code enforcement. I talk about it a lot, but the city's not stupid. This is a big well-thought-out plan. Also, I was able to put up a video yesterday of a sweep that happened last week. It's not supposed to be happening during the pandemic and they're violating CDC guidelines. And I suggest you people look into this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Aguirre. Robert, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak.
Just piggybacking on what Scott said, I did do some research on that and I found out that the County of Santa Clara has not yet adopted the moratorium on the use of Roundup. Where many other counties have already done so. And this is a known carcinogen here in the state of California, so it's not like we don't know what's going on. There's many, many lawsuits going on where people have contracted various types of cancer as a result of working with or being around Roundup. And so I urge you to take this up because it's like DDT that was sprayed in the fields and caused a lot of problems for people, not just immediately, but through genetics. It destroyed several generations of people until finally that was, that practice was halted. So I highly recommend that Santa Clara County look into this and please ban the use of Roundup. It's a Monsanto product, that's their branding. Also would like to again talk about the concept of bringing in or creating a homeless court. So people that are criminalized for the, just the mere fact that they have no place to go, they're trespassing no matter where they go, they are used to, or they use these laws in order to exclude people from certain areas and move them from place to place. And it's not healthy for them, it's not healthy for us. It creates a lot of disturbance in people's lives. And we definitely need to have some court set up that can handle these kinds of cases. To best provide the best practice and decisions on the laws that are being enacted against these people. Thank you.
Thanks Robert.
Our next speaker is Sherilyn Maeda. Sherilyn, I'm asking you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak once the timer starts.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Sherilyn Maeda and I served on the City of San Jose's Early Care and Education Commission for six years. I love kids. I love all kids. And they are really my why. Right now the playgrounds have been closed over this last year. The church doors have been shut. School has been alone in front of screens. And sports have been banned. The youth are being destroyed from the inside out. James Jones, former NFL wide receiver and Gunderson High School alumni has talked about how he was homeless as a kid. He needed a refuge. And what he says is that playing football for his high school gave him that. Our kids are being denied this opportunity to find a safe place to clear their minds, to get away from the chaotic world. Right now in Santa Clara County, they can't play games as others can outside of our county, in 49 other states as well. Where is the science for kids? Where's the proof that it's not safe for kids to play, but the Sharks and Stanford can? Our seniors without means must rely on public high school sports programs to get to college. They don't have clubs, they can't fly to Arizona for tournaments. Right now the rental car lines are so long in Arizona with California families waiting to have their children play each other. Those without means can't do that. We demand mental health equity and health for all children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Rosenbaum-Busch. Heather, I'm allowing you to talk, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak once you begin speaking.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. And thank you to all of you for your leadership of Santa Clara County. I want to echo some of the sentiments of the previous speaker, Sherilyn. I thought you said it very well, by the way. You know, we know that you all care very much for our kids, but we are really concerned. I'm really concerned and I know there's a large group of us here on the call, that the current ban on youth sports is really driving a severe mental health crisis. I'm sure you're aware that the CDC reported that attempted suicide among teens is up 30% of year-over-year, so prior to the lockdown. That's country, across the country. But here in the Bay Area, as you know, at UCSF Benioff Hospital, Lucille Packard, Oakland, the hospitals that are serving kids in our community, we're seeing increases of as much as 60%. And that's because California remains one of the few states that has continued to ban youth sports while allowing professional and collegiate sports to continue. Allowing, you know, shopping and people to take airplanes and sort of all sorts of other activity where people in close contact for long periods of time to continue. And we know that the data exists. I'm sure you're aware that the National Federation of High School Sports put out a new guidance referencing University of Wisconsin study showing that sports can be conducted safely. That's why we're allowing the pros to do it, but we're not allowing youth to do it. And the youth, as Sherilyn so eloquently said, are being punished. We have a serious mental health crisis. Adolescent years are very precious and sort of where we see our youth at most risk. And we would really like to understand what the county is doing to address this mental health crisis and in particular, the relationship to the ban on youth sports. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Goldberg. Charles, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Go ahead Charles.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Charles Goldberg and I'm calling to echo many of the same issues that were articulated by the last two speakers. I'm an advocate for youth sports. We all want the kids to return to play safely. I've been disappointed by the lack of transparency, the lack of timely communication as well as clear communication from the Santa Clara County Health Department with regards to their position. Vis a vis sports and in situations where they've decided to vary from state guidance. What is supporting that, those decisions? You know, clearly, we all want the kids to be safe. We want them to do, to be able to participate and return as much to a normal experience as possible. We want to do this safely. I'm sure you understand that parents are not looking to endanger their children, but they want and need clear communication, clear guidance. And an ability to understand what is making Santa Clara County different, not only from the rest of the state, but from the rest of the states within the country. I'll yield the rest of my time, but I would ask that you help the parents, help the administrators by taking the actions necessary to either helping the kids get back to sports or making it clear why, why we're taking a different approach. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Garwood. Alex, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Thank you Jill, I appreciate the time and thank you to the supervisors. Appreciate what you do for our county. And I'm part of the 4-4 club with Mike, so I appreciate your connections to Los Gatos. I'm a father of three boys, all three are football players and I'm echoing Sherilyn, Heather and Charles's comments. We have two high schoolers now. One is a high school senior, one is a freshman. And the word that football can be played from the state is joy in our house. The heaviness that has been weighing them down has lifted. They are ecstatic to get out with their teammates. They are ecstatic to get out and play for their school. They're ecstatic to get out and put their hard work and everything in place. So part of the facts and such that have come through with the Let Them Play California, the CPPH, I mean the new guidelines that have come out, please, Santa Clara County, follow those guidelines. Do not deviate. Allow our kids on the field. Allow them to be out there with their brothers and sisters in California and their fellow Americans. Let them play. Let's not deviate. Let's not be more restrictive. We are Silicon Valley. We are Santa Clara County. We are the leaders not only of this Bay Area, but of our state and our nation and frankly, the world. So, let our kids play. Let them get out there and compete. Let them do the things that get them out of bed, that help them be humans, help them be contributing citizens and help them want to go to school. The data, read it, follow it. Sherilyn, a lot of the other people spoke of it. There's no transmission on the field. Let them compete. And yes, please, like Charles said, let's let them get on the field safely. Let them out. Let them be, let them be kids and be the leaders that they are. And give that back to them. Give them the gift of being kids and children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Neil McGuire. Neil, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Hi, this is Neil and Sue McGuire from Los Gatos and certainly would like to convey our deep desire to let the kids play. We have two boys, 12th grader, 10th grader at Los Gatos High. And, you know, one has coped well, one has really struggled. And, you know, the mental health aspects that are well documented in the emails that you've recently received cannot be understated. You know, we have a kid who also does the play and he has no outlet at all. So, you know, in addition to let them play, let them get back to school as well. It's just absolutely critical for both our boys. They're missing prime time of their lives and it's a possible permanent damage if these kids don't get back out there soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie. Julie, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Good afternoon Board of Supervisors. I'm just reaching out to you today. I also have four kids. All play sports all over the board, from soccer volleyball to field hockey to football, soccer, all of it. And one's in marching band. And they're so used to being busy 24/7. This is what I've raised my kids to do, to keep them out of trouble, keep them off, just keep them well-rounded kids for the society, the society. And since we were shut down a year ago, two of my kids, my two senior boys have lost interest in many, many things. It's depressing. They're depressed. Their grades are, I have, my son was a 4.3 student, three sport athlete. And it's just gone down the tubes. And I just don't know what to do. Thank goodness for Let Them Play California because there are so many millions of families out there that are in the same boat as me. And just to read their stories and to collaborate on each other and help each other through this. And I'm stepping up today. I'm not a good speaker, but I just need you to know, please let our kids get back on those fields. Be with their friends. You know, they need this. They need this. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Weber-Greeno. Beth, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak. The speaker will be, timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can Beth. Go ahead Beth.
Beth, I believe I accidentally muted you. You will need to accept the unmute again, my apologies.
That's okay, I did see that. I was wondering if it was me, thank you. So I just want to reiterate, I mean, I'm actually almost in tears after listening to Julie speak. Yeah, I have a son. Thankfully, he has not become depressed over what's been going on over the last 11 months. When his volleyball season was cut short last spring, when he hasn't been able to participate in sports, I'm thankful that at least he's able to do the online school and stay focused. And at least is getting through the academic part of things. But he needs to be with his friends, as the other speakers have said. The data is there. I mean, they just need to get out and it's a choice. Sports is a choice. Nobody's forcing these kids to go to school to do sports or other activities. I mean, they should be able to do marching band and other things as well and get on campus. And if they're not feeling safe, then they don't have to go. Nobody's forcing them like they may be forced to go to school. And I understand that's a separate topic, which is, you know, probably best for this conversation. But again, they need to get out there. They need to participate. They need to have that interaction. They need to blow off steam. They need to be physically active. They need to have healthy lifestyles. So it's just really important, please, do whatever you can to have, you know, to not restrict Santa Clara further, like has happened in so many, you know, ways in the past over the last few months. And just, you know, let our kids get out there indoors and outdoors. Open the doors to the gym, get the air flowing. Just let our kids get out there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Norris. Mike, I've asked you to unmute, please accept the unmute. You will have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Thank you and thank you supervisors. As I stated.
Thank you, and thank you, supervisors. As I stated in a letter yesterday that I submitted on behalf of Let Them Play Santa Clara, we seek a meeting to discuss what we perceive as a disconnect between the Santa Clara County Public Health Department's stated core values and the current policies and rulings that have been implemented by that department that appear to run counter to those values. In the meeting, we would like to present data supporting the safer return of our children to extracurricular activities. We would like to discuss the inequity within the county, as within the last six months, 15 college and professional teams have been granted permission to compete within the county. There are clearly ways we can make this happen for our kids as well. We ask that you hold your appointed officers accountable to their own value of communication, of community collaboration. We would like to discuss the overall health of the county with a specific emphasis on the mental health of our youth. We know that you have seen the data, and we ask why are families of our county having to leave our county, this area, and even our state to seek treatment they need to heal from attempted suicides and other mental health issues? We seek your open and honest communication to explain why the Santa Clara County Public Health Department continually feels the need to impose stricter standards, those set forth by the CDC and the CDPH. We demand to know why our standards are stricter when the data doesn't support they are more effective in reducing the impact of COVID-19. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzie R. Suzie, I've asked you to unmute. Please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Thank you. Hello, I'm, my name's Suzanne. I'm a Santa Clara County resident, have been for 52 years, a Santa Clara County employee for 22 years with the Department of Family and Children Services, so I, you know, have a lot of experience with working with youth, and a mother of two high school teenagers. And I just ask you to please, please, please consider the evidence. Please consider the information and the data that has been mailed to you. Please consider the science. I'm not sure why our county is being singled out, not just throughout our state, but like somebody else had said, throughout the rest of the country. And I, I would imagine you would agree that for the many families traveling out of state so that their kids can play, that cannot be a healthier or safer option, and then they come back to our state. And so I just, you know, in hearing about and reading and, and seeing on, you know, the news channels, the mental health of our kids is deteriorating at significant rate, significant. The amount of kids that are having to be seen by, you know, mental health professionals is just incredible. And you guys have the opportunity to make, to make some changes there and to better that number and to improve, you know, the, you know, the mental health deterioration of our children. And so I would just really ask you to please think about that, and please think about our youth, and let them play responsibly, and let our kids get back out on the field, get the energy and exercise and socialization that they desperately need. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mike D. Mike, I've asked you to unmute. Please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Thank you for taking my time. My name's Mike Donahue. I, my wife is a county employee at Santa Clara Valley Hospital. I'm also employed in San Jose, so a very proud resident of Santa Clara County. It's frustrating. I mean, we've now heard what, up to seven or eight people talking about getting on the field as constituents, as representatives of our county. It's time to listen to us, right? And the frustration is growing. And recognizing Dr. Sarah Cody, fantastic individual who's doing the best for our county, but she needs to recognize the, the community and recognize the mental health. It is, you know, I have two boys, a girl, and dying to get back in the field, but it's more, you know, you, like I said, you have constituents talking about what they want. It's time to respond. And, you know, if Dr. Sarah Cody disagrees with our, you know, with, with our inputs, then she need, we, we may need to over, over, you know, we need to tell her that she's wrong, and we need to take precedence, and we need to take accountability for the city of Santa Clara. County Santa Clara, I'm sorry, really nervous here. But, you know, it's, there's a lot of emotion here. And I hope you guys do what's best for the kids, and it's frustrating, very frustrating, and I hope you guys act like the other 49 states. Appreciate your time. I relinquish my time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tamara Malik. Tamara, I've asked you to unmute. Please accept the unmute. You have two minutes to speak. The timer will begin once you begin speaking.
Hi there. I don't really have much more to add other than, I don't, I'm also nervous, sorry. I don't need to repeat what everyone else has said here. But I just want you, when you, I don't know how this works, if you, what your influence is, or if you talk to Dr. Cody, but just to think about what's going to happen when our kids in Santa Clara County, if they're benched, and they get to watch the rest of the state and the rest of the country play, and they're not, imagine what's going to happen with their mental health then. I mean, it's going to go from horrible to even worse. And just to think about that. And, and, and I think you guys, if that's the decision, I think you owe it to them to tell them why. Why aren't you letting them play? You owe that to them. They have followed the rules for a year. They've protected the elderly. They've, they're do, I mean, these kids, they have hearts. They're protecting their grandmas, their grandpas. You know, I mean, they, my son has been so diligent with the rules that have been set forth in the name of the people who are vulnerable, vulnerable in their community, but now they're the vulnerable ones. They're missing out. Their mental health is so bad. A girlfriend of mine, I don't want to disclose anything private, but just had a suicide attempt in her family with her daughter. There was not a bed in the Bay Area for her. They had to go out of state because our mental health beds are full, and you need to disclose that information. Why, why is, why, why don't we know? We have a dashboard with ICU capacity. Why don't we have a dashboard with mental health bed capacity? We need to know that in our community. It's all part of the big picture. So I, I have a lot of emotion. I know a lot of parents here do. I don't know what your influence is, but just please, please listen to us and think of our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara.
And that concludes our speakers.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Actually, sir, there is one, one final speaker, Alex Garwood. It was a late speaker.
And I believe Alex already spoke.
Yep. No, but my wife would like to speak, please. Sorry. Can you all hear me? Sorry.
Yes, yes. Mrs. Garwood have two minutes.
Can you come in here? So I'm not going to filibuster until she gets here. She's walking in. Sorry.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak. I thought I was on the list. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that I, that I also support Let Them Play California, of course, like many of the parents on the call. I, I want to reiterate that we, we're all on the same team here, supervisors, parents, county officials, coaches, the kids, we, we really are all on the same team, and I just want us all to remember that we are all working, trying to work together to, to, to create positive change and to do what is right for our kids and our communities. That's my goal in, in making this statement today. I, I really want to just focus on what a lot of people have already spoken about, which is the, the mental health crisis that, that appears to be happening with our youth. I think Heather referenced maybe some of these numbers, but to just put it another way, we learned Friday that at Children's Hospital here locally, suicide attempts have gone from 13 last March to 47 just this January. So that's 47 adolescent suicide attempts in one month in only one children's hospital in the Bay Area. So this is an issue we need to address. The Let Them Play California leaders and coaches have presented Governor Newsom with piles of data showing that youth sports is safe. They've collected this data from, for example, the NFL CDC joint study that shows that after they did some genome testing, zero transmissions occurred of COVID on field. The two minutes is not enough to talk about the data, but we, we need to look at the data, and we ask your help to get Sarah Cody to help us.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn to Zach and Megan.
On behalf of President Mike Wasserman and the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, we welcome you to the 2021 State of the County Address.
Thank you for joining us today for the 2021 State of the County Address. I'm Santa Clara County Supervisor Mike Wasserman, and I'm honored that my colleagues elected me to serve as President of the Board. Like last year, 2021 is no easy time to lead. As Henry Kissinger once quipped, "There cannot be a crisis next week. My schedule is already full." But there is, and we're all dealing with it. So what is the state of Santa Clara County? Despite the damage to our collective health and economy unleashed by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, the state of our county is strong and resilient. It is strong because of the people, the nonprofits, and the businesses that put our collective health before their own, because of the brave healthcare workers who give up days off, much-needed sleep, and their own well-being to care for complete strangers. I wish we could thank each of you in person and by name, but times are different now, so please accept our gratitude and applause virtually. Thank you for your sacrifices. Our county is strong because we have 20,000 dedicated employees working in 70 county departments, agencies, and offices providing vital services to the 2 million people who speak more than 100 languages and live within our county's 1,290 square miles. Vital services like the 1.2 million meals for seniors served annually by our Department of Aging and Adult Services, vital emergency healthcare services provided by our health and hospital system, the second-largest county-owned system in California, and vital services like the 640,000 911 emergency calls answered annually by our Communication Department employees. That's more than 1,700 a day, every day. These large numbers shouldn't be surprising when considering that Santa Clara County has more residents than 14 states and an $8 billion budget this fiscal year. Worsened by the pandemic, the Santa Clara County budget is facing at least a $100 million shortfall, even after significant budget reductions throughout the last six months, which, thanks to our county executive and his team, has resulted in very few layoffs. We are dramatically challenged by state and federal systems and policies that have thus far restricted the funds and vaccines we are fully prepared to utilize and administer. If we were given as many vaccines as we and our partners are prepared to give out, we could easily vaccinate 100,000 residents a week. Because we face so many challenges, we must be even more focused and more vigilant. I want 2021 to be a year of healing and restoration of some sense of normalcy. We can accomplish this by focusing on our county's mission and on the services counties are designated to provide, such as social services, public health and hospital systems, jails, medical examiner, clerk recorder, county libraries, parks, sheriff, district attorney, public defender, and county communications. We will meet our challenges because we are resilient and optimistic. In fact, as I was gathering my thoughts for today, I was reminded of many noteworthy county accomplishments and milestones over the last decade that I've been here, many of which were achieved on the heels of the 2008 recession and during what is now a year and counting of this current pandemic. Some of these include the purchase of O'Connor Hospital, St. Louis Regional Hospital, and DePaul Health Center to ensure continued access to healthcare throughout the county. In retrospect, we would have run out of ICU hospital beds long ago if we hadn't saved these hospitals from being repurposed. The opening of our new county animal service center that takes in more than 4,000 stray and abandoned animals annually from Palo Alto to Gilroy. The Santa Clara Valley Habitat Conservation Plan, which protects endangered species and natural resources. The Human Trafficking Commission, created to eliminate human exploitation in our county. The Community Plan and Homelessness, which has helped more than 14,000 individuals find permanent housing. The 287-acre Marshall Cottle Park in San Jose that preserves our county's agricultural heritage, and the Santa Clara Valley Wine Trail, which puts local wineries on the map, literally. The Renewables for Revenue Energy Project, which has a capacity of 11.1 megawatts and will generate approximately 20 million kilowatt hours of renewable electricity per year. The establishment of the Division of Equity and Social Justice to address inequities in the community. The 2016 Measure A Affordable Housing Bond, which is well on its way to creating 4,800 affordable housing units. In Santa Clara County, we accomplish a great deal because we work hard and we work smart. This year will be no exception. 2021 will be the year of seizing our county from the jaws of a virus that has crippled our health, our economy, and our well-being for too long. A virus that killed, evicted, and laid off good people. A virus that laid waste to lives and livelihoods, schools, and businesses. A virus that was outpaced only by fear, anger, and blame. 2021 must be about healing and returning to our familiar lives. And vaccinating as many people as possible, as quickly as possible, are the key components to this happening. In January 2021, our county set the goal of vaccinating 85% of the eligible population with the COVID-19 vaccine by August 1st of this year. This amounts to 1.3 million people vaccinated. We can do this if given many more vaccines. As of February 15th, we and our partners have administered more than a quarter of a million first doses. Thanks to our partnership with the San Francisco 49ers, we created California's largest vaccination site at Levi Stadium. The Levi's site is able to vaccinate up to 15,000 people a day, again, assuming we are given the doses to do so. Santa Clara County is coming back because people and organizations in our community don't just care, they take action. People like restaurant owner Alex Holt, whose Feed the Need campaign raised over $100,000 in emergency funding and delivered more than 10,500 meals to families in need, isolated seniors and hospital workers on the front lines. People like Leland Hyde Jr., Nitra Shrinivasan, who proved that age is no limitation when she organized a multi-state effort to collect 4,772 pieces of personal protective equipment for local hospitals in just weeks, and organizations like the Edward Boss Prado Foundation of Morgan Hill, which distributed 2,600 bags of groceries, hygiene kits, school backpacks, and meals to South County families in need. It is no coincidence that on the Chinese Zodiac calendar, 2021 is the year of the ox, a symbol of hard work. We will work hard together to lift each other and our community up, to heal from this pandemic, to heal economically, to heal individually and as a community, to heal from both recent and longstanding ills, and to return to normalcy. I look forward to working on these challenges and more with Vice President Susan Ellenberg, whose passion for children, community, and public safety show in everything she does, and with Supervisor Joe Semidion, who won't let us lose sight of protecting privacy rights, safeguarding affordable housing, and improving youth mental health services, and with Supervisor Cindy Chavez, who will keep our attention on equity, social justice, and progress as we work towards the healing process. And with Supervisor Otto Lee, the former Green Mayor, whose 28-year naval career the former Green Mayor, whose 28-year naval career and work as an intellectual property attorney have equipped him well to help tackle homelessness and affordable housing. 2021 fills me with optimism. We are determined as a Board of Supervisors, as a government organization of 20,000 hardworking people, and a community of 2 million people, to move forward, to overcome the adversities we face. Before closing, I want to quote the Hall of Fame coach Vince Lombardi, who said, "There is only one way to succeed in anything, and that is by giving everything." That said, I want to thank each and every one of you for being such an important part of the solution. We will move together into a thriving and healthy post-pandemic era because we are Santa Clara County. We will heal, and we will return to normalcy. For the latest vaccination information, please visit the county's website, www.sccfreevax.org. That's www.sccfreevax.org. And as soon as you're eligible, please get vaccinated. Thank you, and stay healthy, Santa Clara County.
Nicely done, President Wasserman. Congratulations.
Thank you, Vice President Ellenberg. It's very different times now from years in the past, that's for sure. Appreciate that. With that, we will turn to our County Council, James Williams, for his statements and disclosures.
The Board will meet in closed session to discuss items one and two, as listed on the agenda for the February 22nd, 2021 closed session meeting. Does any board member or the county executive have a conflict of interest with any item listed on today's closed session agenda for which you need to accuse yourself? If so, please indicate at this time before we move into closed session.
I don't see anyone. No. Nope, from anybody else? All right. With that, we will move into closed session. Anything else, James?
No, that's it. See you in closed session. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our meeting.